Welcome to the August 23, 2022, 6:30 PM City Council Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I will call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
City Clerk, would you please read the rules of speech?
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public hearing agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table in the council chamber. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. The sign-up card, no sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments except petitions and requests must address the pending issues, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all items. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a comment card identifying the items of interest. Speakers shall be given three minutes per item. However, citizens wishing to speak on more than three consent agenda items shall be limited to speaking for a total of 10 minutes regardless of the number of items identified. All sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to the city council shall be placed in the box on the table in the chamber.
Thank you, City Clerk. Appreciate that. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of June 14, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion for Vice Mayor, a second from Member Stokoe. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Minutes are accepted. City Manager.
Yes, sir. We're on 6A, which is Boards and Commissions. This is the Historic Preservation Board, accept the resignation of regular member James Green of the Historic Preservation Board for an unexpired term that will expire on 31 October 2022. The resignation was effective at 3 August 2022.
Thank you, sir. Do I have any cards on this one?
Yes, sir.
And can I have any discussion, Counselor, or motion? Member Robinson?
No, I'm just letting my lie.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the resignation of Member James Green of the Historic Preservation Board.
Second.
I have a motion for Vice Mayor, a second from Member Stokoe. Roll call vote.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Motion passes, and thank you, Mr. Green. Just like all of our board members, we appreciate the fact that you came and volunteered and did such a great job. City Manager.
Onto item 6B, which is the North Bovard Commission on Park and Recreation. The terms of regular member Andrew Connors and William Klein expire on 31 August 2022. Members Connor and Klein have expressed their willingness and desire to continue to serve on this board as council appointees and have requested a reappointment for two years with a term to expire on 31 August 2024.
All right, thank you. I would, from the council words, I would say that both members are very valuable. I am the liaison to that board for our council, have been since I got on in 2016. And I believe, Mr. Klein, you were already there. Yeah, Mr. Klein has been there, and we have the addition. Both are very on top of their game, as I say, very informed, very contribute, represent our city well, and I certainly would recommend that they are simply renewed. Any other, Member Robinson?
Yeah, I make the motion.
You have one card.
I have a card.
A card?
Not so fast, but go ahead. Hold that. So, yeah, I was gonna get to that. Cards, please.
I just wanted to make a statement of support, first hand, pretty much saying what you are very eloquently stating.
But I tried.
Okay, very valuable member, very passionate about this community. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. And I, again, I'm just gonna reiterate that, that there's been several times with Mr. Klein in particular that he's brought forth a proposal and studied it and delivered it and presented it, and then that board does as they see fit. But I think we're well represented by these two people from the city of Titusville. Any other cards? Okay, Member Robinson.
I'll make the motion to continue and appoint the two regular members back to the board for the next three years.
And I have a motion from Member Robinson.
Second.
Second from Member Stokoe. Roll call vote.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Both are accepted unanimously, and again, I just wanna say thank you. You guys make me proud every time I sit at a meeting. I really do. We got the youngster back there with you, which is what it's all about. So I appreciate that. So, again, accepted unanimously. Thank you guys very much. City Manager.
Onto item 6C, which is the Titusville Environmental Commission. Currently, there are four applications on file for your consideration. Alternate member Yvette Fies currently serves as an alternate member, Mr. Robert Johnston, Mr. Todd St. Louis, who is a non-resident, and Mr. Hector Delgado. They have all expressed their willingness to serve on the Titusville Environmental Commission as regular member with an unexpired term to expire on 30 November 2022. William Young currently serves as an alternate member with a term to expire on 30 November 2024. However, he does not wish to be considered as a regular member at this time. Yvette Fies also currently serves as an alternate member, and if she is not appointed as a regular member, she wishes to continue to serve as an alternate member with a term to expire on 30 November 2023.
All right. Are there any cards first?
We have one card. It's Stan Johnston.
Okay, and Stan is one of the applicants. So what I'm gonna do is, any applicant who is here and wishes to speak, they may do so. So, Mr. Johnston, Stan, come on up and speak.
I have a hand out here. I'm giving you my calling card.
Thank you, sir.
This is some significance in this issue. I guess this time started before I even got here. Notice on this, it says on this business card, it says, "I'm a professional engineer, an expert witness of misinformation and problems endangering the health, safety, and welfare of the public." And according to Florida statutes, my purpose of my license is to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the public. And you already know that I've been very much involved in the sewage pollution of the river and the 176, the PFAS, which the city has ignored as being tested for the Guardian has 176 parts per trillion, whereas the city of Titusville has talked about, Mr. Stauffer has talked about, seven parts per trillion. So this gives you a leading edge over so many of all the states in the United States except one other state. So we are highest as far as with this test of 176, we're next to the highest. 18 states have established an HA, and we are number 17 high. So I've also taken some environmental engineering courses in biology. I used to major in biology before engineering. And I'm especially concerned about the 176 parts per trillion, which the city continues to ignore, completely ignore. I mean, that's from the Guardian newspaper, National Newspaper, and I've sent to you repeatedly, and nobody responds, which is kind of strange. And we have the sewage spill, which nobody responds to that, whereas we have witnesses that it was well beyond December 19, 2020, and city doesn't respond on that. So I think I'm a likely candidate for this office, and TEC has already asked you to respond about the 176 parts per trillion. So hopefully, this time you will not continue to ignore the TEC, as council did ignore them during the spraying, people with sewage and cars in sewage with sewage for, I don't know, for a long time. I have a book here that says that in Cuba, what they did in Cuba, they peed and they defecated on the prisoners from above. And then here in the city of Titusville, we didn't do that, but we did, which I think is even worse, but spraying people with sewage that is municipal sewage, whereas the guards and so forth sprayed people with...
Thank you, Mr. Johnston.
Another minute? Nope.
I see none. Mr. Delgado, love to have you come up and say a word and at least introduce yourself a little bit. Give us a little background. We all have your application on file, so we're pretty informed about your background and your qualifications, and quite impressive.
Well, good evening, and thank you for having me. My name is Hector Delgado. I do live in the city of Titusville, have lived here for over 40 years. The kids grew up here, and my wife taught at Astronaut High School for a long time. And I worked at the Kennedy Space Center with Mr. Jordan for some time when we were young pups up there doing third shift and second shift. And so I go back a long ways. I retired from NASA, 36 years of service, and when I retired, I was the chief engineer for Mr. Gavanna for design and development. So the acreage is large, and he held me responsible for that, and we held everyone responsible for that, to take care of the stewardship of the environment. So my biggest want to be in this committee is just to help the city out, make the city better. I live here, I've lived here for a long time, and so it's just, I have some time now. I am a small business, I do have a consulting company, and that just takes whatever time it takes. But so I'm here to try to help.
Well, I appreciate that. Counsel, any questions of Mr. Delgado? I see none. Okay, thank you very much. And I don't believe we have any other applicants present.
Nope.
Nope. Okay, Counsel, any, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I'm going to be nominating Mr. Delgado. As you heard, he and I spent a lot of time at the Space Center together. I found him consistently to be a gentleman, someone that you can go to and ask for advice. But more than that, he's very personable, and he's not controversial. He studies the issues, and he comes up, as you heard, of course, I'm a little prejudiced when it comes down to engineers, good engineers, and Hector is certainly one of the good ones. We've had a great time, a great run on the shuttle program. We were family, so this is kind of a little weird for me, because, you know, I look on him as part of my family from the Space Center, and so I'm kind of nominating a family member. But I just think that he would be extremely good on environmental council to help the city go forward. So that is my motion.
Member Robinson?
Yes, as I look through the applications and so forth, and where I see Titusville headed and where I see Titusville, where we want Titusville to go, I believe, I also would nominate Mr. Delgado because I think he'd bring that futuristic look to the environment so that everything will match up, that we can grow Titusville at the same time, keeping up with space and technology and so forth. So that, my thoughts on the matter, okay?
Clearly, looking at the resume, our application, some of the honors are beyond exceptional. NASA Exceptional Achievement Medal, the Silver Snoopy Award, which, if you don't know, that's a big deal. And that's, let's see, Launch Honorary Award and various achievement awards, just amazing awards in working out there with that program. And as you stated, I think the more we understand how that works, the more that could even help us with TEC, because we've got a vast variety of knowledge on the TEC. This might be a little different angle. So with that, any other counsel? With that, Vice Mayor, I think you made the motion or making the motion?
I made the motion, yes. Can I, you second?
Okay, I need a second.
I second all witnesses.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor Jordan, a second from Member Robinson. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes, accepted and appointed unanimously. I think you're gonna bring a lot of knowledge from maybe a different area. I've got a lot of knowledge sitting out there right now, and for you to add to that, I hope you can, you guys get to know each other well and collaborate together. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Well, I appreciate it, and I think that there'll be a good group to work with. Thank you very much. City Manager.
Onto item 6D, which is the 2022-23 Student Advisory Council Membership Appointment. Confirm Mr. Cooper Mangiani as a member of the 2223 Student Advisory Council for the Ninth Grade Representative of Astronaut High School as nominated by his school.
Okay, Counsel, any discussion on that? Do I have any cards on that? I need a motion on that. Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, I move that we confirm Mr. Cooper Mangiani.
I think it's Mangini.
Is it Mangini? Okay, as a member of the 2022-2023 Student Advisory Council and the Ninth Grade Representative of Astronaut High School.
Second.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor, a second from Member Stokoe. Roll call vote.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
And Cooper is a accepted member unanimously. Petitions and requests from the public, please.
I'm Bill Klein, live at 3 Indian River Avenue, Titusville. I'm petitioning city council to ask their lawyer to review the Right to Clean Water Petition Amendment to the city charter and suggest the necessary word changes to eliminate any wording problem so that Titusville will successfully implement the petition into the city charter. It is a waste of time and tax money to negate the vote in 2022 just to work on the wording changes later. Titusville City Council voted 5 to 0 to allow placing Speak Up Titusville petition for the Right to Clean Water, city charter amendment on the 2022 ballot. Mayor Diesel and council member Robert Jordan praised the work of Speak Up Titusville to develop this amendment. They also praised all the work Speak Up Titusville did to acquire the 4,000 signatures to place this amendment on the ballot. The mayor and Robert Jordan had some concerns that the charter amendment as written may have some problems getting approved, even if the citizens vote for it. Therefore, they have hired Mark Logan of Tallahassee, lawyer, to try and invalidate the petition as written so that the amendment will not go into effect even if it passes. City council has stated that the reason for hiring Mark Logan is to prevent the citizens of Titusville's disappointment if the amendment is not allowed because of some wording problem. City council would support their citizens better by working on wording changes for the city charter amendment to clear up the confusion with Orange County's charter right to clean water. Our charter amendment gives Titusville citizens the right to clean water. It does not give the right to clean water to nature. This amendment would create a new environmental protection enforcement structure that will extend to the local level and improve health and safety of our citizens. I believe in self-rule. I think cities should have more control over their city than they are given a lot of times. You know, we shouldn't have the state of Florida overruling what we do, but that's my opinion, and I hope that you all will help us support this charter amendment. Thank you.
Before you go, certainly I would say that I am a proponent of self-rule. Unfortunately, we don't get to say how that works. I really remember that being a big deal when it came in in 16, and a lot of sabers were rattled, and, you know, we found out that we don't get to control that. You can go ahead and stop the clock, if you would. I think that we have said up here, I know I have, and you just kind of repeated it, an admiration of what you guys accomplished. And as far as being put on the ballot, that's exactly what we wanted to do, needed to do. If it gets the votes, that's great, but, and I'm gonna defer to city attorney here in a second, but the concern that came to me, you know, I didn't, I'm not that guy to decide all these things, but that there's some wording that would make it perhaps, I don't know if the word illegal is proper or not, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't go well with what we're talking about from the state. That being said, you're talking about change the wording. City attorney, I don't, I believe it's been our, my understanding that we can't change the wording.
Correct. I cannot change the petition language as signed and submitted to the supervisor of elections.
Okay, that's the point. Okay, so it was signed with one set of writing, so if we changed it, the people didn't sign that. That's what it was. So they would not have signed the wording of the petition that they did sign, so we can't change that wording legally.
That's right. I cannot rewrite the petition.
All right, so with that, and again, we don't have the right to call the state and say, "Well, we're gonna do this whether y'all like it or not." We have to, you know, let it run its course, and then if the judge comes back and says, "It's fine," then it's fine, and we would just move it forward. If the judge comes back and says, "It's not fine," as I understand it, we legally can't move it forward, or we have some issues.
It's correct, as far as being a preemption issue. We've filed the declaratory action asking the judge to look at it and determine whether or not we are preempted from having that language in our charter.
Okay, thank you. Question for...
Yeah. I'm gonna reemphasize, I really appreciate what you all did. It took a lot of effort. I've done that before, so I really appreciate that. But you said something, and basically, that we were trying to negate the petitions. We weren't trying to negate the petitions, but I keep emphasizing over and over again, we are sworn officers of the state of Florida, and we have to abide by the rules and regulation and the laws of the state of Florida. And we are caught in a catch-22, because the first law says that if you got a petition, you got enough signatures, it needs to go on the ballot. We have no problem with that. I mean, disagree, which I do disagree with the wording that's on there now, because what we can't continue to forget is that wording says, "Any individual can sue." And I have a concern for every taxpayer in Titusville when I know any Joe, Sarah can come out and say, "I'm gonna sue you because you dirty the water." That would just put a huge burden on the taxpayers of Titusville, because we would have to pay to defend that. I just can't do that. But besides that, the mayor says something, and I think the city attorney did try to emphasize that I want to make it as clear as possible. When it comes down to a petition, when I sign a petition, I'm signing, I read this petition, and I agree with it. What you're asking for is now that you've gotten the signatures and you hear our concerns about some of the wording, you would like for the attorney, our attorney, to change the words. In my opinion, if I was one who had signed that petition, I believe my signature has now been negated, because I was signing it for the words that's on there, and now you're trying to change the words that I signed. Does that make sense to you?
Yes, that makes sense. One of the things that I'm wondering if the city could do, let's say, if for some reason the lawyer says that this petition can't go through, or that this petition will be negated because there's a problem, would the city be willing to work with Speak Up Titusville where we could work on, you know, something equivalent to this, which would gain the rights, which would satisfy your concerns and our concerns? Because if we don't vote for it now, we gotta wait another four years. And if we were able to convince you all, and you all convince us, that your objections to our present wording could be solved with a change and still gain the benefits, maybe you all could bring it up in a meeting, and we wouldn't need the petition and vote on it in four more years. Maybe we could still get it done this year by working together as a group. I would be willing to volunteer to help.
And I'm just, I probably need to let the city attorney speak to that, but as a matter of fact, I am city attorney. I don't think that we can just do that, have a discussion with you, that we're in the legal aspect of things. Now, again, if it comes back, he says, "Hey, it's good to go, we're good." If he comes back and says that, you know, this is not, this not pass Florida statute, and it's not something that he can pass, then we're not good. What, concerning what Mr. Klein just said, go ahead.
In the future, if council decides they would like to have a charter amendment and have language they would like to propose, you certainly have that right down the road to consider that.
Okay, well, let's go one step at a time. You know, let's get, somebody say what this thing is, and then we'll know. All right?
Sounds great.
All right.
Love to see you all work with us.
Thank you, Mr. Klein.
And I like working with you all. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Petitions and requests.
Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue. I'm addressing you as a registered professional engineer and a resident for over 50 years, former employer of the city of Titusville, reading to you two letters. One is from Stale Bailey, and she says, "Yes, yes, I had days worth of migraines, nausea, and others reported vomiting, headaches, rashes, and even a few who went to the hospital with MRSA. Not to mention the utility workers who were exposed to COVID likely through the sewage as they worked to repair it." Another letter from Libby Lovett. "I had a similar reaction. I had burning eyes, ears, nose, throat, severe headache, nausea, vomiting, diarrhea." And she also had pre-existing health problems. So I'm reading that because someone told me, said, "Stop putting this sign-up, this sign-up that I've put up here a certain number of times." sign up that I've put up here a certain number of times, that says spraying people with sewage and so forth courtesy of city council, headache, nausea. Don't do this. Don't do this anymore because, just read what other people have written instead of showing this sign. This is, some people feel like this is nauseating. You know, they're sort of seeing this sign, just, they want to forget it. And, but, and in fact is, is that I've, like, Mr. Klein has come up and spoke to you, says he'd been wanting to, wanted you to respond to some things about the clean water, and you haven't responded until, y'all are responding right now, but the city, city hasn't responded to this spraying people with sewage, you just don't, don't do it, except last month. Jo Lynn admitted that that's what you guys did. She admitted it. She spilled the beans on you guys. I guess it was accidentally, but she spilled the beans in saying that Sarah Stokel and Robert Jordan and Joe Robinson approved leaving the fountains on and spraying the people, women, children with piss and poop. That's what she's saying, when she, she admitted it, but she has no, no, what do you call it, repentance? In other words, she justified it from, from saying that, that there was some, somebody, some unknown person from FDEP said it's okay to leave the fountains on because it aerated, cleaned the bacteria out of the water. Well, what about these people who are being exposed and have all these symptoms that they come and complain to the city council about? You ignored them. You ignored them. So what happened is Robert Jordan and Sarah Stokel approved the spraying of piss and poop on all these residents and cars and so forth like that. They did that. That's what Robert Jordan did, and that's what Sarah Stokel did too, also. And, and guess who I have as a witness to that, who said that? Councilman Nelson.
And time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
I got you. I got you. I got you. I got you. Any other petitions or requests from the public? I see no others. Oh, you wait. Let's go.
Mayor and council, for those who haven't had the opportunity to meet, I'm Bob Boswell, the executive director of the Valiant Air Command and the Warburg Air Museum here in Titusville. I'm here not asking for money, I'm just asking for support of the current museum expansion plans. We have two issues out at the museum. The first issue is we've become a very popular venue. So many contractors out at KSC and NASA and so many local organizations want to host events at, at our museum. We certainly appreciate the income, but it's a two-sided sword. To host them, we have to move the airplanes out of the hangars, host the event, and move the airplanes back in every time, and that's every week. That's not only a labor issue, but is also a safety issue for the airplanes and for the people moving them. Our second issue is we have no more space for the museum to expand as far as airplanes in display hangars and ramps. We are just solidly booked. We can't take any more airplanes at all at this time, and there are some very historical airplanes we'd like to put on display. The board of directors addressed these two issues, came up with a plan, and we are in progress up to phase two of solving that. We've done the engineering drawings for the expansion, for the facilities and the ramp. We have 6.9 acres available at our local site that we can expand on to. So we have in progress right now, we're doing the infrastructure, and we're constructing a 300 by 300-foot asphalt ramp for parking. The next phase is to construct, construct a multi-use facility that would act both as a hangar for the display airplanes and a convention center. We've gone over the design for the convention center, and to validate the need for a convention center in North Brevard, we hired RevPAR, an international hospitality and analyst program and company that has 30 years of experience. They validated the need for the convention center and our plans for it. They said by year three, we would be hosting 86 major events and providing 10,600 room nights each year in North Brevard. Based on their recommendations, we're going forward. We're asking North Brevard Economic Development Zone and Brevard TDC to help provide some funding to help us along with this, and if you think this would be a good economic impact in North Vietnam, of North Brevard, yeah.
You're out of planes a lot.
Got the planes lined up. We're asking for a letter of support, mayor, from the city and the council, to go to the TDC, North Brevard, and our commissioners, who are planning to vote on that the 13th of September.
Well, I would say, right off the, go ahead and stop that clock. I would say, right off the top of my head, that having been out there for a couple of events, it's an outstanding showcase, not only for you, but for our city. I believe we had the police wards out there one year prior to the pandemic, and then I also think part of the pandemic that Titusville High School actually had a prom out there.
We do, and they're coming back.
I had heard great things. I think it actually was after the year I left, and so I had not gotten to do that. But I, council, vice mayor.
Of course. I think it's a good idea.
Thank you, sir.
But I need to understand the convention center. What size are we talking about?
The convention center will provide, it'll be a 25,000-square-foot facility. 16,000 feet will be dedicated to a climate control convention center. They'll provide for 2,500 attendees or 1,300 plated dinners at a banquet. It's a very large convention center, climate control with a commercial prep kitchen.
I mean, it's hard to say no for something like that, if you can.
No, and that's kind of what I was saying when I got started, too, the way it represents our city, and it's a need. And we had discussion years gone by, I think in my first couple of years here, about a convention center, possibly on the river, possibly here, possibly there. We felt like we had a need, but we weren't sure it was going to get used as much as it needed to. In your case, you could help meet that need, and it wouldn't be the issue of, oh, we've got this empty convention center out there, percentage of the time.
Let me ask another question.
Yeah, absolutely.
How much are you asking for from the TDC?
This total, total will be an additional $1.9 million. Now, we've invested over a million so far in this project, but we need additional $1.9 million.
Because I thought that there was $2 million set aside a few years ago for a convention center. I think it was.
Okay.
So you need to go ask for that.
It could have been, it wasn't for us.
No, it wasn't for you, but it's going to serve the same purpose because we were looking at putting a convention center here, so. You should talk, have you talked to Rita Pritchard?
We have.
Yeah?
We have, and she's supporting this right now.
Okay. All right, great. I'll make a motion.
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
I move that we, will you write the letter?
I'm certainly going to give a city manager.
Yeah. Have the mayor write a letter of support for your endeavors.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
We have, do we need to motion this? Do we need to make, turn this into a motion or disadvisement, or?
No. I think I see consensus, and staff will prepare a letter of support for the Valiant Air Command's initiative to construct a convention center at their current location.
Very good. Okay.
All right.
Yeah.
Yes, it'll be a large facility, but 16,000 feet would be set aside as a convention center, and we have additional parking, et cetera, et cetera, that goes with it.
Okay, so the letter has to be more than just the conventions here.
And this would be to fulfill.
A joint-use facility.
In support of a grant request.
Okay.
Yes.
Sounds good.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor and council, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Yeah, okay. Any more consent agenda?
No.
Excuse me, that's where I'm going. I'm going to consent agenda. All right, any more? Yes. Okay, consent agenda.
On to consent, council, do you have any questions of staff for consent agenda items A through E?
Nope.
Council, do you want to pull any items from the consent agenda, from items A through E? City clerk, are there any cards for consent?
We have one individual that signed up for five items.
Mayor, I'd like to read the titles for the record for the consent agenda items.
Please do.
Consent agenda item 8A, approve advisability to modify the code of ordinances, section 21, 1B. Consent agenda item 8B, approve the contract for the city's third-party administrator claim services. Consent agenda item 8C, approve the termination of the memorandum of understanding for the interlocal, or intergovernmental radio communications program, 800 megahertz advisory committee. Consent agenda item 8D, approve the final negotiated contract and authorize the mayor to execute the final negotiated contract for the city marina dock repair. Consent agenda item 8E, approve the Microsoft enterprise agreement.
All right. Council, any comments on that? Call the card, please.
Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue. I have opposition for 8A and neither for all the other four, remaining four. So 8A, it has to do with advisability of, to modify code of ordinances, and I believe you, this, this council just violated rules of order in which you, you approved some kind of a letter that's approving like, approving of financing, help financing of a grant and so forth, or something like that, and there was no motion, and so forth like that, and I have a card that says anything new, and so you did it, and I believe it was illegal, which you did. So I'm just letting you know about that, and I think you should have allowed me to speak, and I think I would have said you should have, you should have waited and not made a vote on it because you should have done it at another meeting. So next thing is on 8A is that this has to do with three utilities, and nobody in here, I believe, can identify what these three utilities are. There's water, potable water, no, excuse me, there's potable water, there's sewer, and what else? Recycled water. Okay. And it says here, it says, connection does not negatively impact existing customers. We're already having a shortage of recycled water, complaints about it from great outdoors. We already have a shortage. So, so I'm not sure how we can improve it. And also, we have something else. We have a boiled water alert, a citywide boiled water alert. Shouldn't we advise these people that, is that, is the city right now, is that they're in a situation like, I don't know if any other municipality, municipal water source has, they have a problem, is that they can have a city boil-wide alert, and you, and people don't get the notification about it? And we had one restaurant in our community that one day lost 30, over $30,000. What if one of these new customers is going to be a restaurant? What are we going to do about the boiled water alert? In other words, the city of Titusville is very special. Special, I don't know if any other, I'm a registered professional engineer, and I, I'm going to say this, I really don't understand what Mr. Stauffer's doing. He gave you, he gave you a presentation that said, that his first presentation said nothing about the four-log virus, that the deficiency of our, of our treatment plant. We have a deficiency in our treatment plant that I don't know if any other city that has it. In other words, we can have, I don't know if Stauffer and Nelson and Jordan are listening to what this is, but we'll have boiled water alerts in the city, and how are you going to notify people? There's no siren? And how long do you think, how many days after they, the boiled water alert was notified? In other words, when they test these samples, it takes days to test the sample, to grow the, grow the samples. And so, in other words, when you get the boiled water alert, it's how many days late? This is the city of Titusville, the gateway of the nature and space, and we have boiled, city-wide boiled alerts that people don't get notification of, and people are spending money on, and it hasn't been corrected, it's been this way for years? So we had a second presentation, and the second presentation, you know why we had a second presentation? Because of somebody that's here in this building right now. Because of Stan Johnston. That's me. Because I called up FDEP, and I said, what the heck is going on here? So I got, I got information from FDEP that's quite different than what, what Mr. Stauffer presented to council, and he received no condemnation. All you do is applaud him. I don't believe it. How negligent and nonsense is this? In other words, finally, he admitted that, is that the city of Titusville has a treatment plant that has a deficiency that needs to be fixed, and he still hasn't given you a report on it. How long has this been going on? For years, for years. I didn't know about it. In fact, is I never heard of four-log virus until then, until now. I don't think any of you have. I don't think any of you even understand it. Just put your heads down. That's what most of you do. Just put your, that's what I see right now. People just put their heads down when I, when I tell you some things that are shameful things that are happening in the city of Titusville. It's shameful. So we have a citywide boiled water alert, and yet, we're, we're right now with this 8A item, we're talking about negatively impacting existing customers. I want you to understand also, too, is that I told you before, is that I was warned back in about 1980 or thereabout sometime, when our, we had a different water resources director, he says, we are in trouble. We're in big trouble. He said that, by golly, the water level in the water tower on South Street was just about to drop down. We were about to lose water pressure in on, we'd have to have a, a big problem. That was during summer, where there was peak demand. So he said, and then it was soon thereafter, what did we do? Because we had a problem with, even there's a possibility of a moratorium at that time. It wasn't notified to anybody here, but we were, we were looking at a possibility of a moratorium because we couldn't furnish the water. In other words, we almost lost it then, and he said it happened more than one time. And so what the city of Titusville do just recently? They took down the water tower. And so what I said, I objected to it, and so what the city said? We've got calculations to show it's fine to do it. So I said, let me see the calculations. So I don't know, two weeks later or something like that, I still don't get, I get calculations for the one on, on, over there near IRC, the church over there. Guess what? We don't have calculations, although he, 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 he reported to council. I hope Stokel is listening to this. Mr. Stauffer, one of your, you're a wonderful guy. I don't know if Mr. Jordan's listening to this, or Mr. Larissa's listening to this, but Mr. Stauffer asked me to pay about, I don't know, was it $2,300 or something like that, for calculations, because the city didn't have calculations, so we took it down. Now, I don't know whether we did have any calculations or not, but I want you to understand, it's very diff, water towers are there because they, they have been servicing a need. In other words, they store water, they store energy, they replace the need for, for pumps, and now I don't know whether we can do it. I don't know. I, I, I'm of the question right now is, do we have capacity in our water system for expansions? Are we going to have a moratorium? We had a moratorium before. So, so I don't know what you are doing, but I'm talking about water resources with this thing. Already, I told you about recycled water, told you about the boiled water alerts. Now let's talk about the sewer. In other words, does our sewer plant have capacity? You understand when it rains, when it rains, is that the, the treatment plant receives a lot of stormwater, a tremendous amount of stormwater, which I believe exceeds its capacity. Fact is, we understand when, if we have a big, a big storm, it is going to exceed the capacity of our, our stormwater plant right now, sewage plant. Ask, ask Mr. Stauffer if you don't believe me. Ask him. So are we in trouble? Is the city in trouble? Y'all can whisper each other, Dr. Stokel, y'all can whisper each other, but actually, you're supposed to have your microphone on.
Go.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. So, so the thing is, is that we have problems right now that apparently our council and our city manager have no idea what's going on, because we don't get regular, we don't get current reports. In other words, for example, how about our well, well supply? What about the well supply over there at, near IRC Church, south of 50? How productive is that, that well field? It's been resting for, I don't know, how many years? How much is it producing? It never, it never did come up to any kind of expectation that we had it. We spent well over $12 million on that, that's what, down the drain. Now we're spending 13.7 million on a upgrading of recycled water. 13.7 million dollars. 13.7 million dollars. Does the city know what they're doing? Absolutely not. I don't see it. I don't see it. So anyhow, this 8A, I have serious objections to. I think you're, I'm showing to you is this, that council doesn't know what's going on. I think you're, I'm showing to you is this, that council doesn't know what's going on. Especially, I'm talking about the boiled water alert. I also mentioned about this other thing that's right here, one hundred and seventy-six parts per trillion that the city refuses to recognize, although it's recognized in a national newspaper. Yeah, yeah, that's right. So thank you for letting me get, let me have a few minutes. May I have another minute?
I see none. Thank you, sir. Um, any, any other cards? I need a motion, remember, Vice Mayor Jordan?
Mr. Mayor, in council, I move that we approve consent agenda items eight A through eight E.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. I have a second from?
Second.
Member Stokel, roll call vote.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Consent agenda is passed unanimously, city manager.
Onto ordinances, second reading, public hearings and related actions. This is item nine A, which is resolution sixteen twenty-two, confirming and certifying the rate for annual stormwater utility assessments role. The assessment incorporates a eight point two six rate increase for FY twenty-two, which is equal to the consumer price index as of April twenty twenty-one through April twenty twenty-two. As required under section one ninety-seven point six, three, six, three, two Florida statute, public notices were mailed to each person owning property subject to the assessment, and, and an ad was published in the newspaper with the date and time of the public hearing. The resolution certifies that stormwater utility assessment role for the municipal fiscal year beginning October one twenty twenty-two and authorizes the mayor to sign the certificate to the non-adalorem assessment role for transmittal to the tax collector's office. Mr. Kevin Cook and Sandra Reller are here to answer any questions that council may have on this resolution number sixteen twenty-two.
Counsel, any questions? Wow. I see no questions. Cards, please.
Stan Johnston?
Stan Johnston, professional engineer. The, I'm not against what is, was, what the, Mr. Cook is doing and public works is doing here. But I do comment about some expenses that are, are not proper, that this, that he is, that Mr. Cook has inherited. And that is, there's a dam in Parkland Estates that is illegal. It's illegal big time. In fact, as I went ahead and filed a complaint against the, the engineer of record on that particular dam, and through the processes, he went ahead and relinqu, he relinquished his license. And the board made some other complaint. And so he relinquished his license. And so what we have is we have a design dam there that, according to the design, has a, stores sixty-five million gallons of water. Sixty-five million gallons. That is compensatory storage that's never been compensated for. And right now is what we have, is we have a modification to that dam that's, that's somewhat, that's different, that's never been gone through any kind of process, there's anything. And that's in Parkland Estates. And so this is not only six, the two hundred, which is two hundred acre feet of water, two hundred acre feet, two hundred acre feet of water, according to the calculations, two hundred acre feet of water in an area where houses are in the one hundred year flood zone. I don't think you heard what I said. Two hundred acre feet of water, that's a lot of water, in an area where houses are in the one hundred year flood zone. Obviously, it's a, it's a erroneous flood zone that the city refuses to correct. And that should be done by stormwater. Stormwater should take, take, take a handle of this because all of this is illegal. It's illegal big time. And I just don't think you should be doing what you're doing. So I'm not against this, this agenda item, but I, I would like to have some things corrected, which, which Public Works inherited from someone who was handling it poorly. And you know who I'm talking about? Mr. Stauffer and Mr. Larisse. So thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Cook.
Thank you. Next card?
Stuart Buchanan.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilman. My name is Stuart Buchanan. I'm a resident of the city of Titusville. My working address is P.O. Box fifteen forty-five, Titusville, Florida, three, two, seven, eight, one. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of this item. I was so happy to get the written notice and see that the city of Titusville was raising the stormwater fees. I was incredibly pleased. For several of the cities I worked for, city of Daytona Beach, in particular, I was in public works engineering. I worked with our stormwater engineer, and I would write grants utilizing the local stormwater funds as the match. Many of the subdivisions that we have in the city were built before the days of St. John's. They were built in the sixties and the seventies and the eighties, and the environmental resource permits really didn't kick in until the early nineties. These local stormwater funds are one of the only ways that you can draw down state funds from St. John's and DEP for local construction projects. You can get, you, with your local stormwater dollars, you can bring those funds down. I'm going to give you two quick real examples. We would go into the older neighborhoods that were built with no drainage. We would find the four most dilapidated houses, who, which of course were almost always rentals, without estate owners, in case, in the case of the one subdivision I did. We'd buy the houses at market value. We'd tear them down and turn them into stormwater ponds. St. John's would match our local stormwater grants, stormwater funds with grant funds. The second ones we would do is the older subdivisions along the Halifax River, same thing. In this case, those subdivisions were drained by untreated outfalls. They had pipes that simply just piped the water down the road and piped it into the Halifax. Same deal. We would find the oldest, most decrepit house, we could use that for our pond, put inline treatment using our local stormwater dollars matched by DEP. Those are just a couple of examples of retro projects. I, I greatly support this item. I'm so happy to see that you're raising the fees. And again, not only, obviously, a lot of this money gets put towards operations for maintaining your system. If you put it towards capital, a percentage of it, it's one of the only local construction projects that you can draw straight the state dollars down on. Thank you for allowing me to speak, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions? I see no questions. Thank you for your words. Appreciate it. Any other cards? All right, I'm looking for a motion.
Can I speak?
Yes. Oh, when you're up, that's normal for a motion.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I move that we approve resolution number sixteen dash twenty-two, confirming and certifying the rate in annual stormwater utility assessment role.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor. I have a second from Member Stokel. Roll call vote.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. City manager.
Onto item nine B, which is ordinance number twenty-nine twenty-two, establishing code enforcement lien reduction process. This is the second reading and public hearing. The city attorney will read the ordinance for the record.
Ordinance number twenty-nine twenty-two, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending chapter thirty-one, Article Five, Code Enforcement Board, Special Magistrate, by amending section thirty-one dash seventy-one administrative fines and liens by adding a subsection creating a code enforcement lien reduction process, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, incorporation into the code, and an effective date.
The proposed ordinance establishes a procedure for processing code lien reduction requests, including application requirements, factors to be considered by the special magistrate, and making a recommendation for reduction, and a final approval for the reduction and release by the city. And staff is here to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, counsel, yeah, counsel, any questions to the staff? I see none. Do we have any cards?
One card, Stan Johnston.
I'm, I'm for, my name is Stan Johnston. And you have my address. I'm for this and because I've, I've seen horrible things happen, that this city has, has, let's say condemned properties that shouldn't have, shouldn't have been condemned because of the, the fines that were levied on, on properties that made it very difficult to, to, to act upon. And some of them were just nonsense. So I'm, I'm in agreement with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other cards? And counsel, any comments? And Vice Mayor, I'll take a motion.
All right, Mr. Mayor, council, I move that we approve ordinance number twenty-nine twenty-two, establishing code enforcement lien reduction process.
I have the motion by Vice Mayor, second by Member Stokel. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes, motion passes unanimously. City manager.
Onto item nine C, which is ordinance number thirty twenty-two relating to building trade services. This is the first reading of ordinance thirty twenty-two. City attorney will read the ordinance for the record.
Correct. In addition to being the first reading, this is also the first public hearing. And this is ordinance number thirty twenty-two, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, to allow building trades services as limited uses in the community commercial CC in planned industrial development PID zoning districts, and amending the conditions for building trades in the urban mixed-use UMU zoning district by amending sections twenty-eight dash fifty-four use table and twenty-eight dash two oh three building trades services, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, an effective date, and incorporation into the code.
The second and final public hearing is scheduled to be conducted by city council on thirteenth September twenty-two at six thirty. The Plan and Zoning Commission considered this ordinance at their meeting on seventeen August twenty-two and recommended approval seven zero. Mr. Brad Parrish is here to answer any question that council may have on this first reading of ordinance number thirty twenty-two.
And it is a first reading, no action or vote will be taken. Counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Parrish? I see none. Are there any cards? With that, again, it's a first reading, no action will be taken. We'll get you on the second reading. We good? City manager. Tell me again? I did ask for cards.
Onto new business, item twelve A, which is a work order for consultant to review the conditional use permit number two dash twenty-two, Independence Recycling. And it's RFP twenty-two P zero five Lima Romeo. On twelve July twenty twenty-two, city council approved a request for a proposal for a firm to review CUP two twenty-two for Independence Recycling and review the report as prepared by the applicant's expert. The scope of services included the two tasks, actually, four tasks that are in your packet. We have sent this proposal to Barnes, Ferland's, and Associates Incorporated. They have not had time to respond completely to the RFP, so I'm not asking you to approve the RFP today. What I'm asking you to do is confirm the tasks that we put out in your packet are what you want the consultant to accomplish.
Would this be a vote, or?
Yes, sir.
So we'll, we'll confirm with a vote?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, you know, my, my feeling, I, I do feel after this question that Barnes and Ferland are able to do the things that I believe I was part of that motion, to have a, an expert witness from the city. And with due diligence and research on that, I do believe that they are acceptable and would be perfect for us to hear from. Any comments from counsel? We got a ditto? I, I, well, I was concerned about that. I was concerned that we wouldn't be able to, because, you know, first, it was moving slowly as far as getting an expert to step up to the plate. And we've got somebody in there now that looks, you know, very qualified and an expertise to help us with some understanding.
And our, our goal, we've, we've spoken with the firm, is to have the contract language and pricing at your next city council meeting so they can get to work on it then.
Okay, so we're not voting on any of that? Or is this simply saying this is what we want to afford with Member Stokel?
Yep, no, I was just going to say, I agree. I think the tasks cover basically what we said at our last meeting. The health impacts, the environmental impacts, the lagoon. So I'm, I'm happy with the list.
I agree, I agree. So first of all, do we need, any cards on this one?
Yes, sir. Stan Johnston?
Stan Johnston, as you know, I've, I've said a few things about this. In fact, as I'm the one who said, is that, that it appears that some people are not really sold on the idea in the community, and that hasn't been proven to them that it's going to be a safe operation. And then, then we had this motion that had a lot of requirements, which I think is good, but I think it would be a lot easier if you just went ahead and visited one of these sites in which they were operating, and you would see it. Because it's, to my knowledge, we had one here operating in the city of Titusville. Right over there where that new covenant church was. I think Mr. Jordan should remember that. They piled up the concrete and so forth like that about, oh, I don't know, sixteen, eighteen feet high. And we had an operation over there, and, and many of the people in the church didn't know a thing about it. Well, I'm not sure, maybe, maybe the church was closed by that time. But anyhow, we had an operation right here in the city of Titusville, residents and so forth. So I think that it's, it's, it may be considered if you would just go ahead. In other words, I think you can get rid of this Barnes, Barnes and Ferland and so forth, and just, just go out there and, and find one where, maybe it's in, in Orlando or somewhere, and visit the site, and you can see what's going on. You can see, is there a lot of dust in the air? I've been told it's not. Is there a lot of noise? I've been told it's not a big, big deal about the noise either. I don't know how they do that. But so, so I think it's, it's, it's not bad what you're doing, but I think you can improve on it by just going and cut, cut a lot of the, the red tape out and just, just visit a site. Be real easy. And I thought, I thought somebody had already, oh, maybe Mr. Jordan had done something like that. Maybe he didn't. But it's, 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 it looks like it'd be a lot simpler just to visit the thing and have those people who come say it, it's horrible to visit it also. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other cards? Any comments from counsel? And then we will take a motion on this is what we want. Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor and Council, I move that we approve work order for consulting review conditional use permit number two dash twenty-two.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor. I have a second from?
Second.
Member Stokel. Roll call vote.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yep.
And motion, well, it's not a really motion. Our advisement passes unanimously. Yes, sir. Go ahead, sir.
Onto petitions and requests from the public present non-agenda items.
I don't think there's anybody here that fits that tone. We've all had our opportunities, so we move on to mayor and council report.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to speak first and just be very brief. I would like to, I don't know, and I have discussed this with city manager and city attorney. I would like to, I don't know if it's propose or make a motion, or just send it to the staff for study. I would like to see that we don't have city council meetings on city voting days. Because, well, I say that because I don't want it to be one that we don't have a council meeting because they're voting in Volusia County and Flagler County, but we're not voting here. I want it to be tied to the fact that if, if you are a council member and you are running, it puts you in a tough spot. If you are one of our regular speakers and you're running, and puts you, well, not as much of a tough spot, but it, that makes it difficult. If we were to have a busy night and we were to have, you know, one of our nights like we have till four in the morning kind of thing, where it's really a big deal, I don't want it to come across that we, you know, didn't make it a big deal because we're having it on, and I'm sure city manager will work around that. I just think, and, and again, as I said to them when I noted this, this probably doesn't happen once a decade, maybe. It may not be that valuable of a move, but I just think that when it does happen, we should at least have the opportunity to adjust to it and say, you know what? We've got city elections that night. It'd be great if we didn't have a city council meeting at the same time. Member Stokel?
Yeah, no, I, I agree. I'm, I'm trying to think out loud of how the logistics work, and I just looked, yes, our, we have a council meeting on the November election night as well. And it, to me, I just would like, I don't know if this is a question for city attorney, if it's something that we as council can vote on, because I'm thinking of what if somebody on council is running for a different position, it's not city council. What if we do? What if we do? Can we make that call based on a majority vote of council members to say, can we move a meeting and give enough notice that we're going to do it on the third Tuesday versus the second Tuesday, for instance?
Sure. I think if we know ahead of time of a conflict, we can bring that to your attention, and we can vote to reschedule the meeting so we can do proper notices, etc. You'll have to do that ahead of time because?
Right. Because of proper notice.
For advertisements, obviously.
I will say with this meeting, when I knew we were going to have a meeting on this night, I did mention it. And what I received back was it's not against code or standard and that, quote, "We've done it before." I don't like the idea of doing it, and I just assume instead of making an adjustment, make it very clear for future calendars. Again, I don't think we're going to have to adjust a calendar more than twice in a decade, maybe. But I would like us not to, you know, I just think it gives a reverence and an importance to our voting day. We go about business as usual, and if you're running, sorry about your luck, you got to make a decision. You know, let's face it, the bottom line is, most people who are running are going to be out there till 7:00, 7:30, doing what you got to do. And that makes it very difficult, and you have to make a decision you shouldn't have to make.
Right.
That's just that. The other part is, if, if it's an election in the city, our focus should be there, and I think that it's just easier to just say, when that happens, it would be the, perhaps the third.
I like that.
And, and that it's just, that's the standard, and 20 years from now, it's the same standard.
Yep. No.
So that's just, just my thought.
I would agree.
What do we do if we want to?
So why don't we, since the November 8 election is a city council meeting night, let's entertain a, a motion by the council to move that to a date certain, and we'll do all the proper advertising. I would suggest the 9th, which is a Wednesday. That way, we'll take care of this year.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with that, of course. I, I hate to think they'd make that motion or word and find out that, oh, gosh, I can't make that meeting. So, I'm sure we're fine.
We could put it on the next agenda if you want.
I think people might be interested. Let's put it on an agenda for now.
What was the November date you're looking at?
November, November 8.
I like that because I feel like a lot of us do get invested in election results, and then it puts us, like, we're missing results right now if that's happening because we're here conducting business, so.
So, so we'll bring this back to you. So what I hear is advisability for us to bring something back to you at your next meeting regarding the November 8 election, moving it to November 9.
Yes. And, and obviously, you guys would take care of that, make sure it's advertised in advance, blah, 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 because it is very odd for us not to meet on that Tuesday. But it's also very odd, that's, that's a big election night. This is big if you're running, that's for sure, and it's big for our city, but that's, that's everybody. So I, yes, I like that. I, we just pass that on to you, and you'll bring it back.
Yes, sir.
All right. Sounds very good to me. And with that, I'll move, let's go right to left. Let's start with Member, did I? Oh, then I can go this way. Member Stokoe.
Don't have much this time. Thank you for letting me attend the annual conference. It was a blast, a lot of good information there. The biggest thing, though, as you guys know that I'm passionate about, is the legislative stuff that happens in Tallahassee, and we were able to meet again and go over a lot of our wins. I will say, as we move forward, I did get appointed to the Municipal Administration Committee again, and we are looking for ideas of things that we feel are important to local government, that we want to either get behind something positive that we want the state to push, or if we feel like something's going to be happening, that we need to get correct information there. Short-term rentals might get brought up again, business and private property, I think, is always on the radar. So if you guys hear of anything or think of anything that you would like me to bring my committee, it's great because it's a catch-all for a committee that other items don't necessarily fall under, so we can kind of do anything. So if you guys have anything, feel free to let me know, and I'll bring it up. I also was appointed to serve on the Florida League of Cities Board, so, for the entire state, so I will officially, I think, I actually officially started at the conference, and then we'll have our first meeting next month, so I'm really excited about that. I think it will, I'll be able to see a lot more of the inner workings of the league as well, and plan to keep you guys informed. And then lastly, as you guys know, I started the Young Elected Municipal Officials Group. We had a social at the event. We are having a virtual meeting next month, and I, we've grown, I think, over 40 members now at this point, so we are going strong. That's my report.
Very good. Very, very good. Vice Mayor.
I, I actually find it very discriminatory that you have a young, but I'm going to leave that alone because you are under 40, aren't you? The first thing I want to do is officially congratulate Jolynn Nelson. She actually won her election with all precincts, because I'm looking at it right here. 52% of the vote. The, the sad part to me is only about, say, about 10,000 people voted.
That's low.
That's, that's very low, for sure. And looks like Herman Cole and Kathleen Perez will be going to the November election, so that's your two election results. Unfortunately, it looks like Misty Belfour did not win, and you have a new school board member. What's her name? Megan Wright. Megan Wright, is 60% of the vote.
You good?
I am good.
All right. Member Robinson.
No surprises. No surprises.
I'm staying out of that.
No. The only thing that, that has been, that I've been dealing with and hearing about is, is affordable housing. And that is, everyone wants a fix, you know, it's been in the paper a couple of times. So I'm trying to, as the, the elected official on the housing board, trying to figure out some ways, what we can do and, and what we cannot do, and what money is available to help the city with that. Working with Terry Franklin and, and some of the staff is doing some Zoom meetings about what the state has available, and we're doing our best. So if you get any things about the cost of housing, there, you know, there's not a lot the city can do about it, but we are, we, as a committee, we are looking into it and trying to bring resources if, if we can to the area.
Very good. I actually talked to a Realtor about that topic today because obviously it's on, it is one of the top things in our area and our country, affordable housing. And she said that the prices are at least not going up like rockets, but the inventory is not getting any higher either. So the supply and demand is going to continue to be an issue. I would conclude up here by saying, yeah, I think that, yeah, last Tuesday, I was fortunate, my son works at the Space Center now, and I was able to go out and watch the rollout of Artemis, and it was so exciting. It was so much like when I was a kid and my dad would take us out for rocket launches for the Apollo. And, you know, the people all on the grounds and, and on their cars and in their lawn chairs, and it wasn't as crowded as an Apollo launch yet. But I would say that the excitement and the spirit is absolutely equal to where it was with the Apollo, and I can only imagine what it's going to be like starting, well, it's already, you can feel the, feel the build in this weekend, and I don't know how many people will be hanging out Sunday night, but I got a feeling there's going to be a lot of people hanging out Sunday night. It's going to be really, really exciting, and certainly our, our thoughts and prayers are with the entire space program and the Artemis success. City Manager.
Yes, sir. City Council had asked us to give a status of the American Rescue Act, ARPA funds that we had received. It's under my report for the alloc, there are two allocations of the FY21 and then the FY22 that we're just beginning to execute. So also, the two public hearings for the budget scheduled for 14 September at 5:30, and 22 September, we, your final public hearing, also at 5:30. Subject to your questions, that completes my report.
I see no questions. City Attorney.
Yes, sir. Under my report, 16A, this is for informational purposes. On August 10, 2022, the City Attorney's Office received a request for relief on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. Wright, owners of the property located adjacent to South Route 405, Columbia Boulevard. And they were the applicants for small-scale comprehensive plan amendment SSA 1 2021. That's the property in front of Wendover. Pursuant to Florida rules of judicial administration, the owner submitted a request for relief pursuant to Section 70.1 Florida statutes and a request for informal mediation pursuant to Section 163, 3181, subsection 4, Florida statutes. Florida statute, Section 70.51, requires that the city forward their request for relief to the special magistrate, which is agreed upon by the city and the owners within 10 days of receiving the request for relief, and within 15 days file a response to their request for relief with the magistrate. The owners have agreed to an extension of 35 days to allow sufficient time for the city and for their attorney to agree upon and select a magistrate. It is our intention to bring the name of the magistrate to counsel for your approval at your next council meeting. At that meeting, we would then also ask you to authorize someone, we recommend maybe Brad Parrish, to attend the mediation as the person with authority to recommend a solution and bring a recommendation back to counsel. I stated this is an informal mediation process. Individuals who have been denied a request for a small-scale have avenues for relief and for the rezoning. In this case, they've asked for that. Again, I don't need any action tonight, I'm just letting you know they have requested the informal mediation process, and at the next meeting, hopefully, we all have a magistrate for you to approve and designate someone to go to that informal mediation.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah. I, I, I think I've stated a couple of times, I don't agree with, because I know we have rules and regulations, so we have to do it, but the council had made their decision. Going through mediation, to me, kind of try to usurp the authority of the council, which doesn't make sense to me at all. But I understand what we have to do, so if, if there is some mediation and Brad is the person, he hasn't said anything tonight, so I guess this will be a good job for him when the tide comes, for sure.
But again, we'll, we'll bring that at your next meeting for a decision.
Okay. That's where I am with it.
And, and I'm going to go ahead and, and jump in there, and I've already made it clear to you guys as we spoke. I, I agree with you, Vice Mayor. We go with the flow, we do what the rules say, you know, whether it be on a referendum that a judge has to decide, or a follow-through after a decision's been made. But it, it is disappointing that, you know, it's, you know, bottom line is, I agree that we made a decision, and it's a little frustrating that, you know, replay. So that being said, I want all fairness, and I want to follow the rules, and we shall do just that. Member Robinson.
Yes, I, it's, it's just one of those, one of those things, you know, that for, for convenience, I guess, is a good word, that I think it was, this is all just advisory, is it not?
Correct. It, it, it's not a binding decision. It's an attempt to resolve the issue.
And that's, and I, and I support that. It's, it's a good faith effort.
I absolutely support that. Well, the bottom line is, it doesn't matter if we support it, we don't like it, we hate it, we love it, we're going to do what we have to do. We always do what we have to do, and we're going to do it precisely correct. Member Stokoe.
Just to clarify, so when they go to this mediation and say, and I do feel like Brad's been involved with this project, so I feel like he, he kind of gets the idea of what counsel meant that entire 10-hour night. What happened, so if Brad's, Brad suggests something, or they come to some type of potential agreement, obviously, it has to come before counsel, do they still have to go through the process and pay fees not knowing, and are they aware of that process?
You still will follow processes to implement anything that is suggested.
Is there a reason that they feel that mediation would serve them better than the conversation?
I can't speak for them.
Okay. Okay. All right. That's all.
We will do our due diligence.
I will also like to update you regarding the declaratory decree action we were talking about previously with the petition. We had asked for an expedited hearing in an attempt to have a ruling before a judge did not accommodate us, he was unable to have a hearing. So, Clerk, I guess you can confirm the resolution, did go over the supervisor of elections?
It did. Yes, sir.
Okay. So we will continue to move forward with the case, it, you know, as efficiently as we can. I just want to let you know that it did go over, and we don't have a decision yet, but we'll continue to move forward.
And of course, and I know that was discussed previously, that, that the timing of that is unfortunate. It would have been nice to have a decision before it went further. Again, we will do what we need to do, and, and sometimes, clearly, from some discussion, people think we have a lot more power on these things than we do. We simply, this, we don't make any decision. This goes to the judge, the judge makes a decision, and then we do whatever we need